I was about to. Thank you, sir.
I'm glad you found that so funny. It must just be unbelievable. Okay.
Hey, put that. He, he, you do me a favor. You better swatting, I think you put tonight something in.
It's Jeff.
It's six o'clock. We'll get started in one second. We need an address on the sign and sheet. Thank you very much. All right. It is six o'clock and we'll get the meeting started. Call to order and the pledge is going to be done by Chief Grooms and the invocation is going to be done by Stacy Finley. So you'd all rise, please.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, individual, liberty, justice, law.
There it is. Please bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for a wonderful day, Lord Jesus. We thank you so much for this wonderful community that we all get to live in, Lord. We pray, your Lord, that you'll watch over everyone, Lord Jesus, who gets to come to the meeting tonight, Lord. We thank you for all the young children that get to come to the meeting tonight, Lord. We thank you for all the leadership of our community, Lord. And Lord, we pray, Lord, that we be good servants for you, Lord, and that others will see us serving you, Lord, and that they'll want to get to know you better, Lord. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks to the two of you. And I say, roll call, please, ma'am.
Duncan Greenberry, here. Bill White.
Here.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Eric Harvey.
Here.
Willie Alderson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right. We have two sets of minutes. One is from our study session on September the 15th and the regular meeting of September the 20th. What you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion to approve. And the regular commission meeting is a number of pages.
Yes.
Do that we accept the minutes? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those.
That's for both study and regular.
Yes, there is. Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We got two or three things to do. First is our proclamation for the Bass Club. So, young ladies and young gentlemen, if y'all would please come in. Anybody up here that'd like to go forward as well? And we've got lots of copies. So everybody can get one. I'm not sure we got enough, Kate. If you really need.
Maybe y'all should go out back.
We mentioned it on the board, gentlemen. How neat. How neat. Yeah, come on. Y'all still in the rock. There you go. Get off. Now, yeah. Now. Before I did the proclamation, I just wanted to say thanks to each one of you. It's, I was talking to Jeremy Saturday and when you, young ladies and young men, show up, everybody knows mouth wasn't saying anything because you do it right. You represent our community exceptionally well. Thank you for what you've done. How many bucks did y'all say?
We were being 10 bucks.
There we go. So what this, what this group does for this community is outstanding. And it's not only right here. When I read this proclamation, you're going to see it goes very widely. Going to see, we're going to talk about a couple of other stuff. So again, I just want to thank each of you. Got your copies. So afterwards, you won't get all the pictures you want for family, please, and we'll keep moving along. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and its citizens are rightfully proud of your resident and whereas a citizen recognized Evan Wood and Spencer Love as well as the Mount Pleasant Bass Team as an integral part of this community. And this is what's impressive, ladies and gentlemen. Whereas in 2021, the Mount Pleasant Junior Bass Team won the Tennessee State Championship, West Tennessee Regional Championship, and Central Tennessee Regional Championship. Triple county crown victory that has never been accomplished in the storied history of competitive high school fishing. The team of Tristan Stewart and D.J. Johnson won a Bass Master National Event on Lake Lake in Alabama. The team of Peyton Davidson and Camden Randall won Saginaw Bay Mission. Mount Pleasant won two of the four national events in 2021. This is an unheard of feat. And whereas this year Evan Wood and Spencer Love placed in the top 250 high school votes nationwide and earned his lot to compete in the Bass Master High School National Championship. The team traveled to Lake Hartland located in South Carolina to compete. The team hooked a solid fifth place in the nation. Each of the anglers have multiple full ride scholarship offers. And whereas all these anglers are finding success in the classroom and out on the water, each member must maintain community service hours, high GPA, and be excellent students in their studies. And whereas these individuals and their team represent the city of Mount Pleasant, Murray County, and the state of Tennessee with the highest of standards in participation. And now for, now therefore, I, Bill White, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the date of October 18, 2022, as Evan Wood, Spencer Love, Tristan Stewart, D.J. Johnson, Peyton Davidson, and Camden Randall, day. The honor of them in due call upon the citizens and residents of the city of Mount Pleasant join with us in duly recognizing the outstanding performances of these individuals. Hear me, who will speak?
Oh, Carson Howe. He's our president for '22 and '23. And I'm sure he's got something really good to say. No pressure here on spot.
I'd like to thank the community for supporting us all throughout what we do. And thank y'all for always digging behind us and helping us get through this tough time.
Jeremy, anything else?
No, we're good. Per the community, so like Mayor White was saying, this weekend was barbecue festival with our biggest fundraiser. I always give a big huge shout out, thank you to the community. We was able to sell the 125 Boston butts, I believe it was. We also went through, I think it was 600 hamburger runs. I think it was 21 Big Tens of cheese and 600 potatoes. So very thankful for the city for hosting that event. I know everybody here is either a constituent or a member of the council. So we definitely appreciate you hosting that event. These anglers travel, they'll start in August. They'll fish all the way up until December. We'll take a break in December, January. They're back on the water in February. Usually championships are in May. National championships are in June, July. So this is a year round sport. We travel as far south as Florida, as far north as Michigan, west to Texas, and east to South Carolina. The state of Tennessee is just a playground for us. We're all around East Tennessee, West Tennessee, and everywhere in between. I had a phenomenal year last year. We're already off to a room to start doing. And at the end of the day, I'm proud of each one of these folks in here. I found all the supporters in the back, back, and go Tigers.
Last thing I'd like to add is if you'll notice their shirt, I'd like to thank each of the sponsors because if you'll notice, there's a lot of them on there. They were nice and got me a shirt and I wore it somewhere and they said, which one of these are you trying to support? I said, every one of them. So you can see there's a lot of support behind them. So thanks to all the local people that have done that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Yeah, if y'all like, y'all can stay up. We're going to do a swearing in. Loretta's going to swear in our new police officer, Mr. Corey England. So Corey, if you and the chief would come forward, please.
I can't hear you in the back.
Your name.
Your name. Your arm.
This is going to one, the first of many. That's right.
Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Corey England.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
State of Tennessee.
State of Tennessee.
And the ordinances and the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the, I'm sorry, what was it?
Ordinances.
And the ordinances.
And charter.
And charter.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
My duties.
My duties.
In accordance with the general orders.
In accordance with the general orders.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
With the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you, and thanks to everybody that's here. I'll leave it to the department. Thanks to the mayor. Thanks to everyone.
A lot of reading.
All right. Next, we have the mayor's appointment to the Mount Pleasant Recreation Commission. And this is the name we've heard before, Bedford Smith. And it's great to have Bedford back as part of that group. He's there anyway, right?
He'd be here if he's not, he's sick. Yeah, he'd be here otherwise.
Yeah. So entertain a motion to approve Bedford as being on Recreation Committee. Nice move. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, completion review of unfinished business meeting ordinance 2022-1101 public hearing, and this is a final reading. An ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning and land use control, Chapter 2 zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant District Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, is on property being annexed by Resolution 2022-38 located off South Cross Bridges Road at tax map 127 parcel 020.00 to R1 low density residential. And at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Corey and to Kate.
All right, Mayor and Commissioners, this is the annexation that we have been talking about since May of this year. At the last meeting in, I don't know what month we're in, in September, y'all annexed this property. And then the next ordinance was this one right here, which was to assign a zoning to that property. Y'all declined to do that and instead you deferred this ordinance to give the planning commission time to create a new zone that would be applicable only to this property. As I spoke with y'all at the study session, I have some concerns about annexing a property and then not zoning it. So we've talked about two options going forward that you could, if you're not happy with R1 zone for this property, if you feel like that's not appropriate for this area and it's not in the best interest of the city and the people inside that area, then you could de-annex this property. And that means that it would put that property back to where it was before you started this process. And then later on, if the developer wanted to develop through the county, they could do that. If they wanted to come back and after y'all created a new zone and then asked to be annexed again, they had that option as well. The second option would be to vote on this ordinance as it was presented to you with R1 being de-zoning assigned to this property, R1 being the lowest since the available to Mount Pleasant right now. So the reason this, it's on the agenda as this ordinance is simply because we had to publish the notice right away. So if de-annexing the property is something you want to do, we have that resolution available to you as well. I will also tell you that since the study session, the developer has now made a request for de-annexation as well. So that's what you have before you. I think Kate might have something to say, but if you do want to de-annex, we have, like I said, a resolution typed up that looks very similar to the one that was annexing, but just says that the annexation is undone. And this property would be unincorporated and go back to the county.
Yes, just to go on top of what Corey had said, talked to the developer and the owner of the project going forward, and they've requested that we de-annex the property because of the, all the constraints that are involved with what's going on at this point. They, we can only annex by the owner asking or by referendum. And what the owner asked was for the annexation and the zoning, and we did not provide that. And so they've made that request and Mr. Jose is here. But I'll go ahead and pass out the resolution to de-annex for your consideration.
Kate, do you think, Corey, do you think it would be appropriate if Mr. Jose wanted to make any comments right now?
Yeah.
Jay, if you'd like to make any comments right now.
Yeah. Mayor and councilman. So when we were presented with sort of this situation that we certainly didn't expect, you know, it definitely caused us to think about the project and how we move forward, you know, in a consistent and predictable manner. Since that study session and then thinking about that a little bit more, we did, you know, did meet with the sellers. It was a consensus that, you know, we wanted to withdraw the annexation because, you know, we, you know, the R1 zoning was part of that original annexation request. And when that wasn't approved or considered been, considered to be approved, then certainly it seems like it's the best course of action going forward. So respectfully request, if you consider that, you know, our request for de-annexation tonight. And any questions, certainly, for you to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Jose?
And procedurally, if this is the option, if this commission wants to make a motion on the de-annexation, that would happen first before this other zoning. Because if the property is de-annexed, you no longer have jurisdiction to.
You would make a motion to suspend the rules and put this Resolution 202246 on the agenda at this time.
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rule?
I make the motion to suspend the rules and to put Resolution 2022-46 on the agenda and to de-annex the property.
Can we do the agenda first? You have a motion to, a motion to put the 2022-46 on the agenda.
Yeah, just do that.
Okay.
And vote on that.
Right.
Right.
Is there a second?
So we have a motion. Is that correct, Miss Greenberry?
Put that on the agenda.
We have a second from Miss Willie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now.
Now, now Miss Greenberry can finish her motion.
There we go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to de-annex the property because according to our charter, you will have to annex it and zone it at the same time. And amendment is not in agreement, our Zone 1 is not in agreement with the Zone 1 that's out there. And I feel like that it would be inappropriate. But I want it noted that Mount Pleasant, fire, police, and utilities are still furnished out there, and they do a good job of what they do. So nobody's life was that they're in danger and they'll turn around to our public schools if you went in and did our surveys.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes, I'd like to motion.
Got a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White.
Yes.
Duncan Greenberry.
Yes.
Mike Davis.
Yes.
Eric Harvey.
Yes.
Willie Alderson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And just for point of clarification, we de-annex pursuant to this resolution.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's just some comments that I'd like to make. Miss Jose, first of all, I'm sorry this has taken so long. Having been in the banking industry, I know your product and it's excellent. I certainly don't feel like this is the end of this. And if it's not, that's okay because those customers will shop in Mount Pleasant. Those customers will be covered excellently by our services. And I wish you nothing but the best, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thanks to everybody.
I'd just like to say I apologize we didn't go through either, but either way, I know you'll have some homes developed out there. They'll just use our services. So, you know, you can't stop the county, but that's okay. We appreciate you interested, you know, of our stuff. But I wish you nothing but the best. And like Neil said, I hope you come back to us again.
I will.
Got a good problem. All right.
Is there anybody that wanted to speak? It was a public hearing.
It was a public hearing.
The ordinance comes off the agenda because we have a jurisdiction.
But this was a public hearing and a final reading. Anyone care to speak?
I'll speak.
Uh, did you say? Yeah. State your name and your address, please, sir.
George Varellis, 935 South Cross Bridges Road. And first, I'd like to thank the builder. Appreciate, that was very honorable in the way he presented that. I appreciate that. I would like first, if I can, present you some paperwork.
Mr. Varellis, I want to remind you, you've got three minutes, please, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Sure, thank you. If you'll turn to the second page. You'll see that there is three neighborhoods. One, well, actually four. One is Westgate, one is Cross Bridges. I'm sorry. Westgate and Crossgate. And then up closer to us is Zion Crossing and Legacy. And these are all one acre plus. And they're beautiful neighborhoods. They do very well. The builders there, they provide their own roads, their own septic, their own water. They pay for everything. So, you know, a development back there can be successful. We don't have to do low density to make a neighborhood successful. So I just want to just point that this is around our area. And as you can see, with all this farmland around there. And this is a very similar scenario to what we have there at Cross Bridges. So, you know, I appreciate, if the builder was considering this for the benefit of the community, I greatly appreciate that. These people that have built their homes all around this area, they had to follow very strict guidelines. And they're in place forever. You know, all brick, big lots. If you build a structure back there, it's got to match the house. It's got to be brick. So to go back in there and put a neighborhood to where you're looking at 17,000 square feet versus an average of 65,000 square feet, that's a big difference. It didn't conform. And so I just wanted to point this out because, you know, we can have a very successful neighborhood. We're not about stopping growth. I'm a home builder myself. I'm part of the Middle Tennessee Home Builders Association. So I love growth, you know? But I think, you know, there's a place for everything and we can have a successful neighborhood back there that complements the residents and what they've already invested in. So I appreciate your time and let me speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name and address, please, sir.
I'm Greg Loandowski, 955 South Cross Bridges. I'd like to second everything that Mr. Varellis said. Also, this should have been an educational moment for the committee here. Your zoning commission is not passionate about the zoning laws and even well read by them. No one expects all of you to be experts, but you should be hiring experts to sit on that committee and watching the confusion, the trepidation, and really the misunderstandings that went through these absolute volumes about the lack of process and scrutiny being put through on who's being placed on certain committees here. And those committees help you. So this was a self-inflicted injury to the council.
No need for that. Yes, Mike.
I would just like to say one thing. I mean, when you, I guess, talked to us up here or whatever, our planning commission, they did deny this. So, you know, when you say people are not qualified or whatever, we do have qualified people on the planning commission and here as well. But I just, you know, I just, I just don't want you or somebody else to think, you know, we don't have somebody knowledgeable enough to know what's going on. So, you know, we do. And we might not make the right decision.
Thank you, Mike. I mean, they make decisions based on our ordinances. So I guess as it, as it is, the buck stops here, not with them. That's right. No, you had your opportunity, sir. Hold on. I mean, the buck comes across to us because we are the body responsible for making the ordinances. And we are taking a hard look without throwing darts from out there. Okay? We are taking a hard look at giving our planning commission the tools that they feel they need because their hands are bound by those ordinances. So don't throw darts. Thank you. At them. Because they are public servants. They, they're doing the best job that they can. And I think they're doing a fine job. Thank you.
And I was just going to say, you know, you are throwing darts today.
We do the best we can do for our community. And whether you want an acre home out there, whatever, it will be developed. You still might not get what you want from the county. So, you know, all we saying is we still going to supply water, fire, gas. It's all that's going to happen out there from Mount Pleasant. And it's going to happen. And I hope you don't go in front of them and tell them the same thing.
Anybody else? If you'd like to, yes, ma'am.
I'm Jessica Evans. I'm 961 South Cross Bridges Road. And I would actually like to thank the planning commission because I was at a lot of those meetings from the very beginning. And I personally really appreciated that I felt like they actually listened. And they declined it and, you know, because they didn't feel like it was a high enough thing. And I felt like they really did listen to us. And so I wanted to say thank you to the planning commission for that. And I also want to say to this commission, I appreciate you wanting to do things the right way in de-annexing it. I appreciate that tremendously. And I imagine it can get very complicated. So I want to thank that. And I realize you guys are using a lot. I think a lot of us on South Cross Bridges Road, these are our homes. We want them to be our forever homes. And anytime you get talking about homes, it's going to become very personal. And sometimes I think that comes across. But we do, I think, really good points were made that one of the big things, and I want to re- I want to re-estate what I felt like we've been saying for a long time, when we bought the properties and everything, we were thinking one acre lots plus, that it was Perry's place, it was supposed to follow a specific rule. And I think that's really just what we've been wanting. It, it's just for it to follow that, which I know is no longer you guys, but just, you know, just to kind of re-estate that. But I do want to say thank you for listening, um, and thank you to the planning commission for, for listening to us.
Thank you.
You don't want other signed up, so.
I can.
Might as well take your three minutes, too.
I won't need it. Uh, Shaw Daniels, eight forty-five South Cross Bridges Road. I would also like to thank both committees for, for giving us the opportunity to come down here each time. Even though everybody didn't agree on, on everything, we, we were at least able to present what our thoughts were and what our requests were. So, you know, moving forward, if, if we can continue this same process, then, then I think Mount Pleasant will still be moving in the right direction. It may be moving just a hair bit slower, but hopefully we can maybe look at some of the, uh, some of the obstacles that we were, we were looking at and need to consider, and that, uh, we can look at some of those, then maybe we can, uh, get a better product in, in different areas, because I think there's a lot more growth coming to, to Mount Pleasant than anybody realizes. If we can, uh, if we can address all of those concerns as we move forward, I think it'll be a better situation for all of us. And again, I would like to thank y'all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Shaw. I appreciate that. And I, I would like to say I appreciate the positive comments. I want to defend the planning commission in this group up here. It's not easy. Put your name on a ballot if you want to try it. Thank you.
I'd just like to say one other thing, I guess, what you said, that's right, going up towards Zion. And Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Let's talk about that one when we, because we're trying to get through this one right now, we're not talking about up that way. We need to get this one.
I'm just talking about mayor, what it, our citizens cannot get what we offer to somebody else, not in the city limits. That's what, that's what I'm saying, and it's not, but that's all.
All right. Cory, what's the next step? We're done with all this?
You have D N Xed the property, like it never happened.
We don't, we don't consider the, on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, you don't have jurisdiction to, uh, hear ordinance twenty twenty-two eleven oh one, because the property is not within the city boundary.
All right. Thanks, everybody. B, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh two, a public hearing, and this will be the final reading as well. An ordinance amending Title fourteen, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter two, zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning a portion of a property from highway commercial to high density residential R three, and another portion of the property from highway commercial to medium density residential R two, approved rezoned South Bend Crossing.
Mayor Commissioners, the, um, developer owner is, is here if you have any questions, but as you all know, that this is, um, originally it was all zone highway commercial, and it, now it's three different zones. The R three is right along forty-three, and the R two is, backs up to Meadow Road, and then you have the commercial that's already available on Greenwood. Um, we, this passed on first reading last month with, without any, um, comment, but, uh, they're here if you have any questions for them.
Yeah.
I would like to speak on this one, too, if I could. So I said it at the first reading, but the city's planner gave comments to the planning commission about recommending this rezon of the two separate, essentially. I incorporated those comments into the body of your ordinance. Um, and we passed it on first reading like Kate said. Also, there's a section in the back that has blanks in it for y'all to fill in, and during first reading, you said, I believe, that this property was, this rezon was in agreement with the land used plan for the area. So it does have that with blanks, so if you do add something, we need to say it out loud so it can go in the minute.
All right. This is a public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak on it. So, that being said, entertain a motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh two.
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Any comments on the specific reasons that we need to insert in there?
The conditions affecting the area has changed significantly from all being commercial to being zoned into the three amendment to warrant the land used and planted, decreasing the, and zoning according to the map.
Thank you.
If it means back to back.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And we'll use the land use that was the first reading as well.
All right. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Yes.
Jackson Granberry?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
I'd just like to say one thing, you know, I guess I didn't vote for it last month. I'm just not so particular on R two, because we don't know exactly how many duplexes or whatever may be on this property. But at the same time, I'm not going against what my planning commission recommended. So, yes.
Eric Harvey?
Yes.
Willie Alderson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. B, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh three, this is again a public hearing and a final reading, ordinance revising and updating building and related permit fees pursuant to the two thousand eighteen edition of the International Building Code as amended and as adopted by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And Mayor Commissioners, we talked about this on first reading, this is getting our, um, fees related to permits, um, for building updated, where we took a, a deep dive with M T A S to learn what it was costing us for some of this development. We want to make sure that the city's not, um, losing money in, in the process. So we also gave you examples last month of the difference, and I think if you remember, uh, it's not a huge increase, it's a, it's an incremental increase, and I'm imagining that probably each year we'll probably be increasing it, uh, as we go forward.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Kate, Cory? Again, this is a public hearing. Uh, no one signed up to speak on it?
Thank you for, uh, putting those, uh, fee schedules and everything in there. That helped, you know?
Nice piece, wasn't it, Eric?
It really was.
That being said, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh three as presented.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. D, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh four, public hearing and a final reading, and ordinance revising and updating the planning and zoning fee schedule.
And Mayor Commissioners, this is similar to what you just voted on. This is the planning and zoning fees instead of the permit fees, so it's just getting our, our fees in line.
Any questions for Kate or Cory? Can you entertain a motion?
Move that we accept twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh four as presented.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from the mayor, and I, just a couple of things I'd like to talk about. I'd really like to thank everybody that came out this weekend for the barbecue festival. It was a wonderful event. Saturday in particular was almost shoulder to shoulder, which was nice to see. Had a, what, thirty-some few odd vendors in, uh, the middle of Main Street, and, uh, thanks to all the support folks in the back, because we couldn't have done it without you, that's for doggone sure. So, uh, thanks to everybody. So, and the second thing is, is football team.
Absolutely.
Go Tigers.
Go Tigers.
Amen. Uh, they got the first two games at home, they won the region, correct?
Right.
And it's fantastic to see, so.
Got Spring Hill, that's Friday night.
Spring Hill this Friday night. That's Spring Hill, correct?
Yes.
So, uh, it's great to see. That's all I've got. Uh, monthly financial budget report, please, ma'am.
Um, one thing this, this month, we have had an issue with, uh, there are companies out there that offer bill-paying services, and I have to fall short of calling them scams, but, uh, they make their websites look like they are city Mount Pleasant websites. They are not. We have no affiliation with these companies, and what they do is that our customers will log on to their website and will put their, think they are paying us for their water and their, their utility bills, when in fact they're paying this company, and they, and this company charges them significantly more fees to process that payment when they could go to our website and, and do the same thing for much less. And, um, there's nothing we can do, because there's nothing, they're not doing anything illegal.
So the money, so if I'm a person, I go to that website, I pay, if my bill's three hundred dollars, I pay the three hundred dollars.
Plus their fee.
Plus their fees, and the three hundred dollars still goes to the city?
They, they will write us a check. The problem is, they don't usually do that in time for us to get the payment.
So it's late.
So the payment is late. So you and the customer get charged a late fee, even.
And their fee.
And.
And their, a transaction fee.
Yeah, and their transaction fee, uh, because they're mailing us a check. It obviously takes a while for us to get that check from that company, but that customer has no idea. They think they've gone online and paid it instantly, or as if they had gone to our website, um, then they would do that, so.
Is this a company that, that we have taking care of?
No.
Oh, no. Absolutely not.
So it's just, it's just that, that's some citizens, like they're.
That thing right there. And they're, they're purposely making their website look like ours.
Yes.
And they're not doing it just to us, they're doing it to, to other, all across the country. Um, and, uh, then they're, then they're calling me on a daily basis, wanting me to set it up for them, for their, for their convenience, and I'm like, no, um, we don't deal with you. Our customers can go to our website and get the same services through our approved vendor that we use, and our vendor does charge a fee, but it, it's a much less fee. And the thing about it is, is that if they go to our actual authorized website, they will, our, if something happens and it don't go through correctly, our ladies up here can look, and they can see if, if the payment was pending, if it was, uh, returned for insufficient funds, or account closed, or whatever. They can see what happened, but because these people are going through this third-party vendor, we have no way of looking to see what happened if something goes wrong.
Are there many?
I'm sorry?
Or is, is there many?
There's getting to be more and more.
Is there a way that we can? I'm talking about we can let this fit us?
Education, that's what I want to do. That's why I'm bringing it up to you tonight, is so that if people ask you, tell them to make sure that they are going to our website, uh, the W W W dot M T pleasant dash T N dot gov.
Is that on the bill?
Can we put there?
Can you put that on the bill so they all know they got the right website?
I think it's on the bill.
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons we changed the dot gov from the dot org.
Yeah. That's the big thing, is if you, if you have people asking, tell them to look for that dot gov. That dot gov is gonna let them know that that is our website, and, and that's, and if they, uh, need help getting it set up, because there is a little, uh, setup that you have to go through, um, to set up the online, our ladies, uh, our customer service, they'll be glad to help. Um, they've helped, when we first started doing this, they helped a lot of people get it set up and get it going. Um, even if you don't pay online, you can actually still get the, through our website, you can still sign up and look at your bill and everything online. And we're now offering that service, um, to where you can actually get your bill on, online, um, versus the paper cards, which sometimes get lost, unfortunately get lost in the mail, or get eaten up by the, usually what happens is they get eaten up by the equipment. Um, but I just wanted to point that out, because I, I think it's something we need to educate our, our citizens that, you know, to make sure that they're on the right side. Um, I mean, if they want to go through these third-party vendors, that's fine, they can do that, but if they're late, they will be assessed that, the late charge. Um, so anyway.
So it doesn't do no good to, to even call these individuals and explain it to them? I mean.
Like I said, they're just one step below a scam.
The people?
It's too late at that point.
Yeah, because they usually find out. With somebody that I know.
I'm telling you, I'm saying you know who, who the people are now.
Yeah, we know. I know the company, that, that one of the major companies that's doing it.
You don't know all your people that's paying through it?
No.
No.
See, that's what I'm saying.
No way to know.
Yeah.
That's, that's true. That's private information.
Yeah. Or we get that check, and so it's, it's.
Let's play it that's happening.
It is, and I just want, trying to make sure, we're trying to do an awareness for people, make sure that if you're bidding online, I mean, we encourage that. It, it's, it's a convenience that we're offering that, at the very lowest rate, we can, we can with a vendor, uh, the third-party vendor that is approved and works with our software, um, and just, just, we just want people to make sure that if they're using that service and they like it, that's fine, but if, um, if they think they're, to make sure that if they want us and our online services, to make sure that they are truly on our website.
The text message that came out was actually from us, though, right to Zion up.
Okay. Yes, that was for us.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, watch that dot, dot gov.
Okay.
Um, and I think you got the rest of the finance report today?
Any questions for Loretta?
What she sent out today?
I ain't had a chance to look.
All right. Entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion for the money, finance ledger report.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I just want to reiterate what I mentioned at the study session, is we finally, after almost two years, have approval to bid out the Rainy Street Sewer Project, and so we're working with Barge to move forward with that, which is the last of the four projects for our sewer improvement. Also want to, uh, mention again that we received a T-DOT, uh, TAP Transportation Alternative Program, in the amount of a million eight fifty for the second phase of the downtown revitalization, so hopefully we can get the first phase started, but now we have funding for, uh, partial funding for the second phase. And then just to let you know that I'll be out of the office for a couple of days next week, going to the Tennessee City Managers Association meeting in Gatlinburg.
Okay. Good.
Kate, on the first phase, I mean, is, is what we got right there, does that take care of it on the first phase, the one B?
No, no, no. You voted on bond issues and all kinds of other funding.
Can the second phase go toward or not?
No.
No.
No. No.
All right. Any other questions for Kate? Special reports from other departments, wastewater. I think you just did that.
I did that with Rainy Street. Uh, we're just, you, you're still seeing, uh, trucks out there at the sewer trunk line. They're still fixing, uh, problem areas. Uh, we're done as far as, uh, we don't have to pay them anymore, but there were some, uh, the engineers were not happy with, but that's why you still see some out there on the trunk line. We're preparing a bid advertisement for Rainy Street. Um, there's gonna be some site work on the wastewater treatment plant improvement. Um, we'll, we'll be excavating for the new tank, uh, in the near future, and then we have a meeting scheduled for Friday to talk about, uh, any wastewater treatment lagoon repair that we want to move forward on. So that's the update for this month.
Thank you.
Can I go back to the gas system just for a second? I was told by some people on Hope Lane, that doesn't have gas out there that's in the city limits, that the city will not run gas out there.
Um, have they reached out to us?
I don't know if they reached out to you, but my understanding is they have reached out.
Okay. Um, if they would reach out to me, I can at least address it directly.
I'll, I'll let it go to you.
Yeah.
Good. All right. New business. A, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh five, this will be a first reading, and ordinance modifying procedures for the inspection of public records for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And, uh, Mayor Commissioners, this is our open records of sunshine law ordinance, and we still had the dot org in the ordinance, and we're updating that to the dot gov, and we, more and more of those requests are done, uh, via the internet, and so. And so this, uh, we changed some of the language to, to impact that. The only thing that I, uh, we're going to discuss as staff going forward is we specifically mentioned Loretta's name because that's her title, but it's an ordinance. So if, if there's a way for us to possibly set up, pass the name, your name, so if she's not here, we have to repass another ordinance with another name rather than, I was thinking we could do recorder at Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, I think it's fine, but, yeah.
You wrote your name out there anyway, right?
That's all right, so.
That's right.
It's just, I was trying to avoid having to do that in the future, but.
I would like that too, but they, the state specifically said.
I didn't get a chance to ask Loretta that earlier today, so, okay.
All right. Any other questions?
This is just the first reading.
That's right. First reading. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty two, twenty twenty two dash eleven oh five.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, resolution twenty twenty two dash forty four, resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to participate in public entity partners, safety partners, matching grant program.
And Mayor Commissioners, as I mentioned on Thursday, this is a two thousand dollar grant that we matched with two thousand dollars and we, um, have, we, we've received it. We've been granted this and we're spending it on safety boots.
Correct. Any questions? We discussed this Thursday.
Right.
Hearing not entertain a motion?
Make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty two dash forty four.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, resolution twenty twenty two dash forty five, the resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to approve a proposal for perfect, for professional services with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated for watershed analysis of unnamed tributary to Sugar Creek.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a recommended that we work with, uh, C E C is what they go by, Civil Environmental Consultants. It's Ricky Oakley's with that firm now. They're definitely the local, uh, state experts on stormwater. And as I mentioned on Thursday, we don't have a stormwater program. We're not, we, we do not have to have a stormwater program, but to determine next steps on stormwater, if any, you need to do this study. And, um, it's a hy, it's a hydrology and hydraulic study of rainwater, where it goes, the, the, the force of the flow, et cetera, way over my head in, in engineering speak. But, uh, we do have this peg to be able to pay for this out of the bond. And we would, we will also apply for, um, mitigation money through FEMA to see if we can get it paid for that way. But we really don't know where to start until we have a study like this done.
I made this comment Thursday night. We had this done by M T A S before the cost of construction products came up and the supply line issues and it was twenty billion dollars. Just so you know.
Are you saying this here is the same thing we're going through again then?
Well, this is at a much higher level. M T A S just did it from a very, they, they didn't get into what these guys are going to get into. M T A S.
The cost to drive stormwater citywide. And this is just a study to determine, uh, where the issues are.
Yeah. Where they really lie.
And then y'all could decide later to do it in pieces.
That's correct.
I don't mind spending the, I guess, the hundred and whatever, as long as we do something, I don't want to spend that and then we say, well, we're not going to do it.
I don't know how we can determine what we're going to do if we don't know the.
If we don't know.
Know the problem.
Yeah. Got to know what it is first. Any other comments or questions?
You can at least do a little bit at a time. You can do something.
That's what we're doing. Entertain a motion.
Move that we accept twenty twenty two dash forty five as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bid opening for chemicals.
And, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, this is a bit confusing. We bid out six different chemicals and we did not get any bids at all for the, uh, muratic acid, which was the, the, the fifth, um, chemical that we bid on. And we only received one bid for the sixth chemical, which is polymer. So my recommendation to you is that we, we award solutions by S E T, which is, uh, the bid award for one, two, three, and four, sodium hydroxide, sodium hypochlorite, calcium thioculfate, and citric acid. I'm sure I've torn those words up, but those are the four, first four chemicals that we would award to solutions by S E tank. Um, I would not recommend a bid on the muratic acid. That's what we use for the splash pad and we think the use will be small enough that we don't need to have a, a bid. And then on, uh, maybe we go, move forward with that first, the first four we would award to, um, solutions by S E tank. And that, y'all had this in front of you Thursday. I don't know that you have in front of you, you should have it in front of you now. We can do it all in one bid award, that one through four is solutions by S C T. And then, uh, number six, the polymer is, uh, Atlantic Coast polymer.
Except y'all, y'all like to do it all at once. We know what they are. We got to look at it Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. We, I mean, we knew, we, we agreed to it Thursday.